...be followed by the pleasure of the ladies.
Let's pray to God for another beautiful day, and I also be a part of it to see. Thank God for being so good, so kind, and as all things, so patient with us. The city administration is counsel. And I pray God you would have that way this meeting on tonight, that everything that we say or do, we please it unto your side. Jesus have your name prayed. Amen.
Ladies and gentlemen, to the mayor of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undeniably invisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Turn your microphones on.
Welcome, ladies and gentlemen. Councilman Lee, City of Bogalusa, you will now have vote call, please.
Vice President Kelly.
Here.
Vice President Irvin.
Here.
Councilwoman Douglas.
Here.
Councilwoman Smith. Councilwoman Tate.
Here.
Councilwoman Aubrey.
Here.
Councilwoman Temple.
Here.
Thank you, council. We will now ask for approval of a amendment for J. B. Allen, please. We have motion in a second. All in favor, vote by vote call, please.
Vice President Kelly.
Aye.
Vice President Irvin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas. Councilwoman Tate.
Aye.
Councilwoman Aubrey.
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple.
Aye.
Thank you for that. We do have a late minute arrival from the district attorney's office out of Frankton, Louisiana, the Twenty Second Judicial District. Yes, I meant, I meant vote by vote call. We are, we're going to ask Mr. Freed from the district, Mr. Doug Freed, if he would come up front with the district attorney's office. He opened his speed to the Capitol, and to the, to the Congress.
Mr. President, council members, thank you very much for your time as mayor, yes, as mayor. We ask for this opportunity because, I'm sorry, please state your name. I apologize, my name is Doug Freed, I'm the chief of the criminal division for the district attorney's office of the Twenty Second Judicial District. And also present tonight is Elizabeth Hoffman, who is the executive, you know, associate district attorney. We are here because Mr. Sims could not be, you know, Mr. Sims had a letter that, you know, he drafted on the subject of, you know, the selection of your next chief of police. With permission, I would like to read that to you, share copies with all of you that I'll deliver to the council president for the distribution. And then, if you permit me, a few moments, just share with you, you know, my experience is working with the Bogalusa Police Department in connecting with homicide cases over the last twenty months or so. Yeah, from Mr. Sims, you know, dear President Kelly, and Bogalusa City Council members, I would prefer to address all of you in person, but unfortunately I will be in Houston, Texas during your meeting tonight. In my stead, I have sent Doug Freed, chief of the criminal division of my office, to convey information to you that I believe is critical as you evaluate who will be the next chief of the Bogalusa Police Department. Troy Turblon has been an invaluable resource in combating violent crime in the community and establishing a close working relationship with our office filled by trust and professionalism. Troy's leadership, combined with his working knowledge in the community, experience, and sheer dedication to the job and the citizens of Bogalusa, they can be clear choice when you achieve this agency. We cannot have a disruption at this critical juncture. Great strides have been made in evidence and intelligence collection that are a part of a long-term strategy in making this community safe again. I again attribute a critical portion of this to Troy Turblon's leadership. Whether it is 12:00 PM or 12:00 AM, he answers the call to service along with the officers under his command. He has truly built a culture of service within this organization. I have spent the last eighteen years prosecuting defendants across this state with the last ten being in a position of leadership of the Twenty Second Judicial District. The relationship that this has, with this agency is as good as, if not better, than any I have experienced. I believe appointing anyone other than Troy Turblon at this stage as chief of the agency would set us back years in making the community a safer place to live. And that is sincerely, um, yeah. What I would like to do, if I could, is explain why I echo, you know, his praise with Turblon and why, you know, I think his leadership has been critically important. Yeah, I would say first, this is in no way slight to another candidate, you know, and the district attorney's office is willing to work with whoever you, in your way, choose to lead the agency. We will work with whoever is the chief. An advantage and continuity, however, is that we have already developed the sort of relationship where Chief Turblon will call me at six in the morning, where I can call him at ten at night, where when I am asking for help on a particular case, he already knows the sort of positions I'm looking for. I have tried, you know, before, very serious cases here in the last about twenty months, including, you know, three different homicides that were investigated by the Bogalusa Police Department. All of them are successfully brought to conclusion, including the shooting that occurred outside of the football stadium back in 2022, October 2022. I have seen firsthand how much better his detectives have become, not only investigate crimes since October 2022, but how much better they are when they pick the witness stand and explaining the things they've done in burglary of their investigations. On each of these cases, I have been in a position to have worked with Chief Turblon to enable us to present the best case possible. And I can tell you, as someone who has worked in different local, state, and federal prosecuting agencies, that it is rare to have that kind of relationship with a law enforcement agency. Let me be clear, this is not the ideal police department. You do not have the resources that you need, you do not have the manpower that you need. But what you do have is a clear understanding of what the mission is and dedication on the part of the people who are working these investigations to do them as best possible. When you have a dearth of resources, and that is something that this community experiences, you don't have money to throw at problems, you don't have extra equipment to throw at investigative work, you know. But what you do have are committed people who want to do the job the way you led. You have individuals who are willing to follow, someone who is going to walk them down the right path. And whether he's left Troy or not, you know, he is someone who has been doing that, you know. You may bring in someone of equal great, greater qualifications, and they can't possibly hit the ground running the way we are, yes. You know, so, again, we will have complete respect for the decisions you make, you know, but those are the things we see. One reason that Ms. Hoffman, she's not on the agenda, and I certainly understand that we declined to give her the opportunity to offer a comment. But she just last week, you know, secured conviction in a case, you know, investigated by the Bogalusa Police Department in conjunction with Louisiana State Police, you know, a very serious crime, you know, targeting children getting off of school buses, you know, murder, an attempted murder, conspiracy to commit murder among the charges brought. And, you know, she is in a position to tell you all of the work that was done by the Bogalusa Police Department in order to put that case forward in a successful way. And in fact, the guilty verdict was returned in that case in under thirty minutes, you know. That is a tribute to the quality of the investigation, the quality of the evidence, and the quality of the cooperation between the prosecutors involved and the law enforcement officers who gathered the evidence and then have to testify about the work that they've done, you know. So, Mr. President, I may approach and hand out original copies of this letter for you to distribute. And if you won't let Ms. Hoffman talk, you know, I think she's willing to step on that. Thank you.
Pull your mic up, please.
Yes, my name is Elizabeth Hoffman, and I work for the St. Tammy Parish District Attorney's Office, representing the Twenty Second Judicial District. And last week, as Mr. Freed stated, I had the opportunity to try a case. It was a four-count case involving a second-degree murder, an attempted second-degree murder, a drive-by shooting, and a conspiracy to commit second-degree murder. And this particular individual was targeting students walking home from school after getting off of the school bus. When I agreed to take on this case, I was provided with a stack of reports about this high, which is a testament to the investigation. The investigation is the only case that I have had where we have had at least four weapons used in the various crimes that were committed, and all four weapons were recovered. That is almost unheard of in these types of cases with crimes of violence in Bogalusa and just anywhere else, in St. Tammy Parish, New Orleans. It is extremely rare that we see the investigations lead to the recovery of all of the weapons that were used, and we were able to ballistically match with the evidence recovered from the scene. The casings that were recovered from the scene, all linked, and we were able, that was a major part in being able to obtain a conviction for this violent offender. And it is a testament to the work that Bogalusa Police Department has done under Chief Turblon's leadership. The, we called over twenty-seven witnesses in that case to testify, it took an entire week. And during trials, it can be fluid, things change, things come up where we need to call additional witnesses. And every single officer who we reached out to with Bogalusa Police Department came on amendments notice. They came to prepare with us, and they were willing to testify, and they did such a phenomenal job that, as Mr. Freed told you, the verdict came back in under twenty-seven minutes, or under, it was twenty-seven minutes, so under thirty minutes. It was a remarkable outcome and just a testament to the work that these officers are doing. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Now move to the resolutions, first resolution to be introduced, and I can be introduced by Councilmember.
Resolution authorizing the mayor of the City of Bogalusa to hire a personnel director.
Any motion?
Thank you, ma'am, sir.
We have a motion, we have a second.
Make the second.
The, uh, the, uh, the resolution will be the mayor appointing the person to be personnel director. That person's name would be Mr. Leslie Pittman. So, we spoke, or currently about this, and it was something that had to be added with Ms. Pittman's name, who's being introduced, who's being put up for that position, and then the council would have to be in. The knowledge of that's the big thing, they stand on the seat when it comes down to the city. Now, we've already read the, uh, the resolution to you, we have any public comment on it? Anyone I can speak on this matter? Come up to the podium, please, give us your name and your address, please.
I need to go in, I want to get in. Ordinarily, the mayor does not come to y'all for permission to get a personnel director, it's in our charter. Is this something to do with the funds we're doing or something? The debt, or did you just, instead of doing that, you just brought up the name later? But you ought to consider the name and salary when it comes up to vote, council has to approve all that.
Yes, ma'am, I think that would come later on the other part. That's all we can, all this is right now is, was on the resolution when we looked into the charter, and it was determined that the person's name did have to be on the resolution, that's why we added this busy Pittman to the resolution.
He did not have to come to you for permission to hire. He did not have to come to you to hire a personnel director, it is included in our city charter.
Well taken.
I think that's, I think that's incorrect. Section four, four eight A states, the head of the personnel department shall be the director of personnel, who should be, who shall be appointed by the mayor, subject to confirmation by the council, and shall serve at the pleasure of the mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Is anyone else I can speak at this time on this matter? There being a little discussion from the public in the council discussion.
Oh, I just have a question, um, any of the best.
Ma'am, can you answer your microphone, please?
Do you have any other, um, persons who apply for this position?
Well, actually, it's an appointment by the mayor, so I don't know if we have to have that to fit support, it's not called for the charter. It's just an appointment by the mayor, the mayor can appoint who he wants to. And he has to present it before the council, and the council will come up and have a vote, or the person that he has selected. Do you feel that position? It doesn't have to be done by, by application, just, you know.
That was my only question, um, that I had, that I did, um, oh, another thing, for Ms. Leslie's position that she started in now, would that be up for a hire for someone, um, within a couple of months, or?
No, ma'am, so, when you, when you all approved the budget, a restructure was in the budget through the salary lines, and that was one of the things that we stated in the, in the cover page that Mr. Bailey gave you all. We're condensing the public records department and human resources into one. So, there won't be another hire for her position, because technically it's written out of the budget. We don't have a public records custodian in the 2024 budget, just a personnel director.
Okay, and then, Ms. Leslie, um, she's here, and just want to make sure she's okay, um, with the new position once we vote the lady vote, with adding one to her, um, her schedule that she has, um, under the same salary. Just, just try to be fair and transparent with her, if she's basically going to be doing two jobs, to make sure that the salary is at a fair for, for her. Does that make sense?
Correct.
Okay. Just making sure that her pay will be fair to her. Thank you.
I do have a council discussion, uh, in looking in the personnel allotment for the, uh, for the personnel manager, as well as the public records, uh, person there. I did see two positions listed, so, would those positions be combined? Personnel person as well as the, uh, public, um, public records person, would those two be combined? I did see on a D and D that, uh, that we will have a, uh, a personnel director, and we will also have a public records director. So, would those two be combined, combined, or will we just have a one position?
No, ma'am, I, I think you're mistaken, neither one of those positions are posted on the, uh, the public information officer is, but that is within the budget, and it does not require council approval.
And then, also looking in, uh, section four oh eight personnel department, it does indicate that the head of, uh, the head of the personnel department will suffice with a degree in, uh, public, a degree in personnel, uh, and, uh, with this, uh, with this Leslie's experience, she does have a vast, vast experience, uh, in her ability, skills, uh, and abilities, as, as well as other experiences that she has, um, is this, is this parent here to that?
She is, Ms. Pittman, can you please approach the podium?
Good evening.
Good evening, how does it feel to be here?
I'm doing well, honey.
Oh, good, good. Just my particular question, with your experience, if you could possibly expand on your, your human resource experience that you would bring to the City of Bogalusa?
Okay, uh, in response, I do have a total of about six years' experience, um, in the human resource area. And that is included in the resume. And page twenty of the charter, section four, that's zero eight, toward the bottom, there's a, there's a word O, capital letter, it says O, at least four years' experience in a responsible personnel administration position. So, although I do not have a degree, uh, in human resource or business administration, I do have the experience, which is more than four years. And that was my interpretation of it, uh, eight indicates, um, it starts at the top, describing the information. It says, at least a bachelor degree in business or public administration or related field, from an accredited university, and at least two years' experience in a responsible personnel administration position, or at least four years' experience in a responsible personnel administration position. Any additional questions?
I'd just like to state for the record, if you know Ms. Pittman, you know why she's our nominee. She operates very professionally, even in high-stress situations. If you tell her something, she holds it in confidence, that's what you need in an HR director. Just an all-around great employee, an asset to our city, and I just can't say enough good things.
Any other committee discussion? Any other council discussion?
You're welcome.
There goes some discussion, we will now vote for, vote by vote call, please.
Vice President Kelly.
I have spoken with the lady of the council on this matter, and about Ms. Pittman. Based on his opinion and reading of the city charter, she knows following guidelines on the city charter. Based on the conversation with myself and the lady of council with the city, I say, uh, we go forward with this vote, and I vote yes for Ms. Pittman, this matter.
Vice President Irvin.
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas.
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith.
Aye.
Councilwoman Tate.
I do know that Ms. Pittman, I do know she is a very, very, very hard worker, and is Councilwoman Tate, and we want to make sure that she does have the public pay scale according to our, uh, according to our personnel, uh, allotment, uh, which indicates, uh, personnel, uh, the personnel, um, the personnel could, uh, director versus, uh, personnel, um, public, uh, public manager, as well, so, with that being seen, uh, I indicate, aye.
Councilwoman Aubrey.
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple.
Aye.
Thank you for that, council. We will move on to our next, so, if you have.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to introduce the resolution.
So, we have a motion to amend, and the resolution is not only agenda at this time, we are going to, to vote to amend the agenda, we have a second. Do we have a, uh, but we're going to propose to amend the agenda. We have a second. Do we have a, a motion of late, agenda, council, and then second, after the whole reading? Thank you, vote by row, by row, the amendment to the cap of the, 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 the board.
Vice President Irvin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Reilly?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
In just minutes, we're right in middle of vote right this time. Go ahead, Mr. Kates.
Okay, ready to see the resolution?
I am in reference to the amendment. I'm voting on the amendment to the agenda.
All right, yes.
Your point of order, ma'am?
Anytime you think the vote is going to go, it's going to be your public representation.
Yes, ma'am? The City Attorney, the Senate, just taking our, the, the, I think, discuss on, to discuss on the amendment, we will get to the resolution in just a moment. Thank you for your attention in that matter. Mr. Temple?
This is a resolution giving preliminary approval for the city of Bogalusa, state of Louisiana, to issue taxable certificates of indebtedness in an amount not to exceed $600,000 for the purpose of paying a portion of the cost of constructing and acquiring additions, extensions, and improvements to the sewerage of city of state city, making application to the State Bond Commission for the approval thereof, and providing for other matters in connection with it.
Thank you, ladies and temples. Do we have a motion on the resolution?
Make a motion.
We have a motion, we have a second, second. We have a motion and a second. Councilmember of the, the second. Do we have any public discussion in the bill? Have any who will speak to us in a minute, that will will speak, if we'll have public discussion?
Thank you, Mr. President. This resolution that you've just amended the agenda for is a preliminary approval only of borrowing up to $600,000 from the Department of Environmental Quality, DEQ, their Clean Water State Revolving Fund. This would be to make repairs to the sewerless stations, which, as you all know, are in dire need of some repairs. The city has a commitment from DEQ at this time to lend from their Clean Water Revolving Loan Fund up to $500,000. It would include $350,000 of principal forgiveness. So that means if you, they made a loan for $500,000, they would forgive $350,000, or 70% of that. You would repay only the remaining balance of $150,000 with interest at .95%. After speaking with the mayor and with the city's engineers from PEC, we thought that just to be safe, because the bids haven't come in yet, we would ask DEQ to increase their commitment up to $600,000, just in case the bids come in over what's expected. If DEQ approves 70% forgiveness of that, that would mean obviously $420,000 of forgiveness, if you're only be paying back $180,000 over ten years at .95%. So it's an excellent deal. In order to do that, the city has to actually issue a note evidencing borrowing money from DEQ. It'll be a drawdown note, kind of like a line of credit. So you'll only draw down money as you need it. If the bid comes in less than $600,000, you don't need to draw the whole amount, you'll just borrow what you need, and you'll get the principal forgiveness at whatever the percentage is on the amount you borrow. Before you can do that, you will need, under the city charter, to adopt an ordinance. That ordinance is not ready for introduction yet, that will be later on. This resolution doesn't commit the city to doing this, it's simply the first step to get the ball rolling and start the process with the State Bond Commission to get approval of this. We'll have to come back to you with an ordinance that will have to be introduced, it'll have to layover, it will be advertised and come up for final adoption, you have all the final terms, but I can tell you, the terms will be not exceeding $600,000 up to ten years, and not exceeding .95%, 0.95%. By that time, we'll know exactly how much principal forgiveness DEQ is going to award, so that'll be included in that as well. I don't know, given the problems that the city is having right now with the budget and the ordinance and so forth, what parameters the State Bond Commission is going to set for us. We won't know that until we ask, and we can't ask until we have a resolution like this that authorizes, may as the city's special counsel, to make a request to the State Bond Commission to approve this debt, and then they'll tell us what documentation they need, or if we need to wait until you've sorted out all these other issues. As part of that application, we'll be, we'll make clear to them how much of this will be principal forgiveness. So we only have to demonstrate the city has the ability to repay probably $180,000. That's over ten years with 1% interest. So that's going to be probably about $18,000 to $20,000 a year. It's not going to be a huge amount for the city to get this money, and that will pay for the replacement of those lift pumps out here. Between now and probably the next meeting, we'll reach out to the State Bond Commission, we'll have a better idea of what they are going to want from us in order to process this. Whether we can close this by September 30th, which is what the engineers and the Department, DEQ, would like, remains to be seen. We may have to wait until all these other issues are sorted out before the State Bond Commission approve this. But I just want to assure you that this is only a preliminary approval, it's just to get the ball rolling, primarily to get, to be able to approach the Bond Commission and find out what their requirements are going to be. We won't, you won't be obliged to do this, and in fact, under the city charter, you cannot incur debt without an ordinance. So we'll be back at another meeting with the full of the ordinance, and that'll, as I said, be introduced and layover. So we're probably looking at a meeting, probably at the August meeting, to introduce that ordinance, if we can sort things out, try to get approval from the State Bond Commission in August or September, adopt that bond ordinance at your first or second meeting in September, and then be able to start drawing down on the money as soon as September 30th or shortly thereafter. If the Bond Commission says they won't take this until you sort out the non-compliance issues, we'll just have to mark time until that's done, but it won't impact it, and then it means the minute that that's sorted out, we'll be able to process this application. Happy to answer any other questions that you might have. Obviously, as, as you know, you'll need input from the public. We have a motion and a second, so once that's taken place and all council, questions and discussion are over, then you can vote on this resolution, and then go ahead and, and take the next steps on this.
Yes, sir. Is there any public discussion on the matter that we just heard, which will hand, and show this resolution, on what we are attempting to do, attempting to have? Any public discussion? There is no public discussion. Is there any council discussion? There being no council discussion, I talk to the vote by row, by row, please.
Vice President Irvin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kates?
Aye.
Councilwoman O'Reilly?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
Thank you all very much. And just one quick update before I leave. The millage ordinance, which you all adopted, well, I guess it was, yeah, it was last month. All that paperwork's been submitted to the Washington Parish Assessor, who legally audited her, so I think we can put that issue to bed for this year. We'll have to deal with millages again next year. Thank you all very much, as always, for your confidence in us. Always enjoyed working with the city and look forward to continuing to. Some of you all have met Kate Creed, who's with me tonight. Kate is an associate with Adams and Reese, and she's working with me on this and other projects, and hopefully will be taking over a little more of the workload for me as I gradually, very gradually, move into retirement. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Mr. Wilson, and Ms. Kate. Thank you all for signing that. Would you like to say anything?
Look forward to working with you.
Thank you. The next, the other one agenda will be on the fourth, to be introduced to you. I'll introduce to your ordinance myself. It's an ordinance of an introduction authorizing payment of GCOs, cost and fee, and GCO versus city of the city of Bogalusa. And this is just an introduction, which will be discussed in our next council meeting. That will conclude our meeting for tonight. We now move on to public discussion, public participation, I would say. First person, we have Ellen Carter.
Ms. Carter, as you approach the podium, please state your name and address for the record. You'll have two minutes.
Ellen Carter, 1406 Siqueery Avenue. I came back again about the speed bumps, and I hadn't heard anything about it from anybody, and my six-year-old grandson got hit by a truck on the sixteenth of June, my father's day. Something had to be done, y'all down there. They driving the fast, and this was a hit, and they didn't stop. So I need an answer tonight, if y'all can give me one, please.
Mr. Patterson, I hate to put you on the spot, sir, but this come down the head of the jurisdiction, please, if you comment.
We had ordered some, what happened in transit, or what would happen, but we're pre-ordering, because we had a conflict, we, 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 do that?
No, I can, I can give clarification. We ordered something for Redwood, the street on the side of, behind the Chevron on Marshall Richardson. We'll have to order more. But I think the council needs to implement some sort of phasing plan, because what you do for one, you have to do for all. And once we keep granting these, these speed bumps, everybody and their mother is going to come line up to the podium and request a speed bump, and it puts us in a precarious predicament, because it puts us at more of a liability with our insurance, the more amount of, the greater amount of speed bumps you have within the city.
But that's, you know, because I don't know, and if you can explain it to me like you just did, I'll, I'll be quiet. But I didn't know what was going on, so I just needed some answers. Thank you.
You know, we have, man, we didn't have, Ms. Carter, in the past, we had situations where we did have some speed bumps put in our city. It caused some damage to vehicles, so it was said, then call the city some money, and then the state come in and they just make the speed bumps.
So if y'all do the speed bumps, it might not do damage?
That's true.
Ms. Carter, I did address, it's on the last council meeting. Mr. Patterson did write the information down, and I also shared with Mr. Robertson, came out and met with you, and he explained to you the difference between the bump and bump, and I did, and I did let the council and let us the citizens know that your grandson had been involved in a hit and run accident, and we were keeping him lifting in prayer, and I also called you back to check on him. However, when I called back, I didn't have an answer, how far it would be, but Mr. Kelly's is also correct. Well, the city did have to go back up, go back out and remove some of those bumps due to so many persons complaining of car damage. And I know recently, they did it over in Columbus Station, they went doing a removal as well.
Yeah, those, those are the big bumps.
And I know they had the move stop sign down there, but like you said, it does need, something needs to be done.
And the four-wheel, the police is down off of Seventh Street, so they come in my neighborhood and drive. So they just dodging, but I feel, I feel for those children on bikes, because I'm sitting on my porch and I have to close my eyes because I'm just here for a crash. I mean, they don't stop at nothing, they just, and if a car coming through there, I don't want to say nothing by tongue, because I have to watch my tongue, because I said it at the last meeting, I hope that don't happen, so to decide something. My, so I'm watching my tongue from now on, or something. Y'all gonna have to just patrol a little better, something, a little more, or something down through there.
Thank you, Ms. Carter.
Thank you.
Jenny McCloud?
Jenny McCloud, 414 Mississippi. Just with the speed bump, maybe what we need to do is come up with some criteria for when speed bumps are appropriate, rather than saying no to all or yes to all. Maybe you can come up with some kind of criteria, like so many accidents within a certain period of time, traffic, or whatever it might be, and that seems like a good reasonable way to deal with everybody wanting one, and then also not denying people who really need one, a speed bump. There should be some kind of criteria that would make sense to me, you know. I don't think we have to go all yes or all no, I think we can come up with a reasonable plan. And the other thing I was going to talk about was just, again, the city council not talking about what their concerns are. You did much better tonight for the most part. Like Kate, when you say I just choose not to vote, to vote no, you have an obligation to the people elected you for why you do what you do. You know, you're not just voting for yourself, you're voting for your constituents, and I would really hope that you guys would be more involved coming up any time soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Miss Gladys Hampton?
Hampton.
Yes. Ms. Lampkin?
Good afternoon, Ms. Lampkin. As you approach the podium, please state your name and address for the record. You have two minutes to start after that.
Mrs. Gladys Lampkin, 1915 Rose Pearl Lane. I have a concern about the corner, the intersections of Austin Street, and is that going to Superior Avenue right by the train, trains track? The light there, it does not change. Sometimes you have to sit there at the light for ten minutes before the light will change to let you forward, and then sometimes it will change and flip right back to where it was. I don't know what's going on with, I, I've sat there, someone is, during the day, early, even, it's like ten minutes waiting for the light to turn green, and it's still red, and the section is going this way, they constantly going and, going and coming, going and coming, but the light in Austin, facing Austin, and this way, and coming from that way, there, they never change. Like I said, we have to sit there ten minutes sometime, because the light just takes the time by changing. I don't know if it's a malfunction in the lights, or what, but something needs to be done. And, you know, if you got an emergency coming there and that light is staying green, and that other light is red, something's going to happen. Something's going to happen. But the light, sometimes it stays for ten minutes. I, I timed it. Right about a gas station on the corner, that light right there, sometimes that light stays one, one color for ten minutes.
So you're talking about coming or out?
Yeah, or to Austin Street.
That light is a sensor. You have to come so far for that sensor to catch your car.
Right there.
That light, that light is on sensor.
Okay, well, because, I know, I don't want to come too far out, because we have people coming from across the track and coming this way, and it cuts short, and, you know, it, it causes.
But it is on sensor.
Okay.
I have had to go in the other lane and have had to tell people to come up, because if you so far back there, it's not going to pick your car. You have to come up a little bit more, and that sensor will pick your car up, and that light will change.
Well, I appreciate you telling me that, because I did not know it was on a sensor.
It's on sensor.
Okay, and one, one other thing is that, the track, that is a, an accident waiting to happen, somebody's car is going to be torn up on that track. We don't have the, I don't think the crossbars come down, and it's got all kinds of holes there, right, you know, right across, something needs to be fixed. Railroad company need to come in and do something, because that's awful. That is awful. You have to take your time, especially people with cars that have cameras on them, under the bottom. They have to ease across there, and the people behind them is trying to run them over to get them out of the way.
Thank you, Ms. Lampkin.
Officer Gray, can you jump in there? Next, we, Kahila Daniels?
Good evening, Ms. Daniels. As you approach the podium, please state your name and address for the record. You will have two minutes after that.
Kahila Daniels, 1204 North Avenue. I'm here on two things. Food trucks, trailers. Few months back, my brother-in-law had a local company that asked a food trailer come back. We had problems. Few weeks ago, there were two food trailers at the, at the meter, and I have recordings of two individuals. And if you can let, my thing is, the council and the mayor, that's who I feel should come together and talk about things, not someone that's out in the community. So therefore, that person shouldn't have no say-so for what goes on in Bogalusa, and what this person and that person can and cannot do. Now, on the recordings, I didn't care for the things that I heard, but that person also stated they want to bring the magic back in the city of Bogalusa. But at the same time, I don't see you trying to bring the magic back into the city of Bogalusa. And what you do for one, you should let everyone else do. And if I can sit in my truck and pass out food, anybody else should. And I'm also here on behalf of the youth here in Bogalusa. One day, I will be glad when you all come together and give some type of resources or community center together for these kids. Bogalusa is magic. And if, what I'm saying, you don't quite understand, I have a national report that will be released in July, and every kid that participated in our listening session, their comments are in that report, and how they feel about situations here in Bogalusa. And it's just not about the prayer, it's other things too. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Daniels. Good morning.
Good afternoon, Mr. Quinn. As you approach the podium, you, please state your name and address for the record. You will have two minutes after that.
Just like you, Terry Woods Quinn, 220 B. L. Street, Bogalusa, Louisiana. First of all, you'll notice right now, we had extreme heat. Last year, we had such extreme heat, it was 105, natural, that wasn't fact, that was really. We had 14 degrees this winter. I'd like to look in, there's some children, there's people that can't get out of this weather, maybe the elderly, homeless, victims, and sick people. I know we got blessed, like girls young over there. Put one police officer in there that can warm up a couple over there. So the church staff, Jim, they didn't take care. I'd like y'all to consider that, okay? And, is Youth Corps working now, Mr. Mayor, the, the Youth Corps people, are they out working now?
Yes, sir, they're in the third room.
I've asked you, we talked about it before, and then kind of enhanced my, make the trails, that'd be a perfect job for them, to just hand tools and so forth, to clobber the hole and all, so people could get through easier on the trail. And maybe you'd be going in there and sure what the problem is. The creepy, erodey part of it, you know, might have moved a little bit of the back away from it.
Right, right. We looked at it, and we determined that it was too big of a job for teenagers to accomplish.
Too big, is the yard lean?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
Me and the friends did it when we did it, okay? I'm sorry about that. An idea about that mental health center on Wood and Sadie Little Street. I think we could get that thing very economical, real cheap. And maybe use it for the streets and parks department to enhance our streets and parks. And maybe have rentals out there, canoes and bikes and so forth, and camping places and so forth. That building would be an excellent building for us to kind of acquire. And let's see, I would like to use our resources of our beauty right in middle town. We got the Bogalusa Creek right on the end, we got the Pearl River, Moche River. Most people, most places don't have that much natural resource, so we could use them. And down on the backside of Cassidy Park, we're gonna maybe keep some chopped-off history, which found in our beauty name, and maybe some armor stuff, trees and so forth down there. One of the colleges might take on teaching down there, but into it. Policies, I would like to know how Blues passed this year. When it was going great, I'd like to give Marcel Hammond a hurrah. He was just a great promoter, then Sydney Scott heard. And if him and Josh Robinson, he's been going around town picking up the litter all his own. And we need more of that.
Oh, and it's in the wind. I can interrupt you, sir. In two minutes, the act is up, sir. Let's bring that back to the next meeting, sir.
We don't have room yet, I said, two minutes, right?
Yeah, two minutes. You got two minutes. I was gonna say, I, y'all's got two minutes.
I'll do something to do it, I promise.
That's okay, thank you, sir. We'll come back to this meeting now. Hey, wait. Yeah, organize the singing. Keith Merrill.
Good afternoon, Mr. Merrill. As you approach the podium, please state your name and address for the record. You will have two minutes, thank you, sir.
Keith Merrill, 925 East Fourth Street, Department 7. Council, Mayor, we have to work together. We don't need no trailers. We have economic development at meetings last Friday, I believe it was, or Thursday, one day last week. So we had, Ms. Temple wasn't there, Ms. Douglas wasn't there. So we had people that was at their meeting, they sitting up there dreaming everything about the development of Bogalusa. So when the meeting was over, I asked my uncle to take me over there to the gas shop. So he took me over there, he was like, yeah, come in there, come on around, I'm gonna show you something. So when I went in there and I came out, he said, let's take a ride down Columbia Street. So we goes down Columbia Street, we see two of the people that sat up in that meeting. They sat up in that meeting and went right out there on Columbia Street to the Good Old Boys taking information back. We know that was doing another reason would you be up there at the Good Old Boys establishment? So we don't need none of this fake stuff. Sitting up there, you said, people talking about, I'm my own man, I'm my own woman, but I can't tell. You have a meeting, then you go back and you gotta come consult with them, it make us say that you a puppy. And somebody's your master and it ain't God. Don't let nobody be your master, fuck God. And don't sit at these meetings and talk all this good stuff. Tell people what they wanna hear, tell them what he wanna hear. If you think he's wrong, tell him he's wrong if you don't agree with it, then don't agree with it. But if you running up there on Columbia Street taking information back, we, we know, we know what's the bottom line. Don't be a puppy. Be a real man, be a real woman, and don't let nobody buy you.
Thank you for that, Mr. Merrill, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Praise for a nineteen thirty-one D. Wick place. I'd like to speak on the citizens that not cleaning their property up. We got peoples on, in the nineteen hundred block on D. Wick, I have spoken many times about these peoples cleaning their property up. The code, code man went to them, they cleaned it up then, had cleaned it up, but you go look at it now, it look like a job. These people do not follow orders. We need to learn, make these people in Bogalusa learn how to follow orders by keeping their property up. If we can't put a fine on these peoples and make them do what they supposed to do, we need to get somebody else to do the job. I'm not blaming the code man because I do know he know these peoples up, but they not doing what he supposed to do. And in the nineteen, in the, that's in the eighteen hundred block on D. Wick. Okay, in the nineteen hundred block on Davenport, we got about four houses that need to be cleaned up. And the same guy on D. Wick on the house on Davenport, it look like a job. There's time for all this stuff to be cleaned up. I'm tired of it, and I hope everybody in Bogalusa is tired of it. So we got a code man out here writing tickets to peoples. And then when they come over here to this court, they level slap. That don't make no sense to me. If we all can't work together, we got problems. I feel it's time for the citizens and the council to have a meeting with the code officer and the judge. And cause all this suits has gotta go. And if you all continue to sit here and then continue to go on, you all need to go. That's just how I feel about it. Because I've been speaking about this stuff for a long time. And it's time for us to get together and get this place cleaned up. We got a mayor who's trying to do the best he can do, his people that work with him trying to do their job. But us council and the citizens gotta do our job. So let's get busy.
Thank you, sir. That's one of the public participation, how we vote, just ministering remarks, Mr. Mayor. Not tonight, people, not tonight.
Well, I got a deal for everybody else, Mr. Mayor. If it's time out there for public participation, I'd give everybody else, though.
So we don't know?
My public participation is in regards to the introduction.
Excuse me, sir?
I assume that there would be an attempt to have public participation on the introduction of the ordinances, but we never had the opportunity for public participation.
We don't do public participation on the introduction, sir.
Okay.
You can do that at the next council meeting on the introduction, for you to come up or vote.
Okay, so if we don't get here anytime to sign up? We don't?
That don't matter, that don't matter for the commission of ordinance.
Okay. But for right now, I'm unable to.
Yeah, it's happened to me, it's over, if you wanna speak at the meeting like you're trying to do now, you need to sign up. Sign up, you should be able to be like these other people did.
Okay.
If you wanna speak on the ordinance when you're here, when the ordinance comes up, they're discussing, public discussion, you just get in line out there, probably come up, sing your piece and talk about that.
If that's how we do it, that's cool.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor.
At this time, I'd like to call up the chairperson of the Christmas and Cassidy Commission. Christmas in the Park.
All right, please state your, who you are and name and address, and also what, what position you are.
Jennifer Stevenson, 2775 South Columbia Street. And I'm the chairperson for the Christmas in the Park Commission.
What is this in reference to, is this a letter or what?
We are requesting approval for seven new members.
Okay, what you, they're bringing the application that we just got, we'll take it, we'll appeal it at our next council meeting, but you come back and we'll be with you on these people. We'll have an opportunity to sit down and go through like the council.
Okay.
And we'll get back with you, the chairperson, we appreciate you coming here. We haven't had time to review any of your applications yet. I imagine it will be a problem, but.
Yes, sir, with all due respect, Mr. President, the applications are, just for you to look over. I understand that you got them today, but you all only meet twice a month. In addition, we implemented the applications. Before, before now, the process was the mayor states, I'd ask permission to introduce the following individuals. They didn't give you an application, they just stated the names, you all voted as a slate. Now, volunteers are, like they're nominees for the United States Supreme Court. People who would like to volunteer their time with the city.
Yes, sir, I understand that, Mr. Mayor. And if everything don't go as it should be planned, we get always go by the rules and regulations for whatever reason. When you find out that you're not doing something, you may change and nobody likes to change.
I know that all too, yes, sir.
We're not trying to be mean toward anybody, okay? And we do take the applications, we look at the applications, and then we, normally we just say yes. In the past, we tried to be transparent, not hurting anybody's feelings, and get along with everybody, including the administration. And we just looked at the people, oh man, we did, we did what we should have done, I get you, and say, we did vote for some of the people. And we've done that some, like some time. But that doesn't mean that what we did didn't do it right, that didn't really work. What I'm trying to say is, I was just asking if you'd wait at the next council meeting and let us come back with you and ask you to be here with you, that would be fine too. If they take, that's fine, because still like our decision, we're probably gonna be yes anyway. But we're trying to follow a set of rules, and we're trying to get the rules established, man, that's all it is, okay? Do you need to say yes, or I'll come back, or you want us to do it tonight?
If it were up to me, I would like to vote on it tonight so that we could move forward. There is a lot of planning and preparation that goes into the event. We did face a lot of hurdles last year and were able to accomplish a whole lot in a very short amount of time. But we were very hopeful to not have to be so crunched for time this year.
All right. I had to, I'm not feeling this. In the, in the gathering, we were just, in the gathering, we're not in a form of a motion, we're not gonna go through the business of. So what you're saying, President, point of order? We have a question about the application here. Administration would like to elaborate on this. To my knowledge, I have never heard of a Bogalusa community of reindeer commission. Is that, is that created by somehow ordinance that someone?
The last time they were active was under Mayor Mize. Actually, all these people who have applications, they served on that commission under his administration.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
So you guys, you wanna proceed with these applications tonight or not? You have to know a major, so somebody say that.
Man, man, but two weeks, I'm gonna make a real big difference from now.
I believe that it could because we do have some plans that I would like to, I would, I would tell you, I did. I don't wanna talk about it publicly because I, if we can't get it done, then we can't get it done. But some of these things would be inviting people whose books, I mean, we're kind of actually already a month behind on this. There's budgets and audits that we have to do as well, and we only need once a month versus every other week. So waiting two weeks for y'all is technically waiting four weeks for us. We made a lot of magic happen last year, just was kind of hoping for a little bit more time this year.
We're gonna wait at our next council meeting to bring this back up. And we've not seen, we've seen several, it's not even allowed in the city of Bogalusa or in the forward board, so they're already.
I'm sorry, who's that?
Janet Thomas.
That's the second commission.
Yes, sir.
Yes, yes.
That's you.
I'm sorry, can I repeat that? You mean, we don't have one until we get these people passed.
I'm gonna say something. Christmas in the Park, decisions have to be made generally by early August. You know, in the previous history, we have a previous administrations, usually guidelines and plans in August and, what is it? August and September, I remember talking to someone, I'm not trying to pressure nobody here, I'm just bringing that subject up. The others, they could, they could wait on the rodeo or a reindeer commission as we renew the documentations. But we need to verify that it has, and council tell us right, you have to leave and release, make sure they've been forward. Consider Bogalusa reaching out, some are 127, some are 139.
Yes, sir.
So, but anyway, that's, that's not all the comment on that situation. And I do apologize, this, this was waiting here, we sat down, we documented it, so. So, Mr. President.
It is impossible, maybe you could tell us a little bit about these people? I don't recognize one name on all seven of them, so I don't, I don't know if you can speak with them. I just said, you want, you know, you just will sit here, so.
Sure, I would love to. I have a list of names, so do y'all wanna call them out to me? But yes, I would be happy to speak a little bit about each person.
How was that for Christmas in the Park?
That's all we're looking at, Christmas in the Park.
I don't know.
I was saying, we can't say it that, but nobody's saying that all, we, we, it would come well if we conceived it. It's not a belief, is it?
Is it, don't get tonight?
Again, again, this is a new standard. I can pull three meetings where the past administration of people are not in attendance. You all knew the goalpost so much, it's not even funny. For the future, since this meeting has to sit into chaos over written applications, in the future, I'll just use the same protocol all the other mayors use and verbally ask for their approval.
Thank you.
I don't see why, what's the problem with confirming these people? They are volunteering to serve Christmas in the Park. We made it look easy and stood that park up for nine days, but it took a lot out of us. A lot of things have, these big displays, they have to be ordered, I have to hear in advance in some cases. When you're trying to order twenty-two-foot reindeer, it takes time. You all, sometimes we don't grasp that concept. It's all this was rushed on us at the last minute. Y'all only meet twice, and half the time you can't be formed for twice a month. So let's get real here.
Thank you, ma'am.
Let's go through applications individually, if you so see fit. And let's keep moving the city floor.
Somebody gonna make a motion on this, the Bogalusa, this lady or a man, I don't know which is female, Jelisa Richardson?
Jelisa Richardson.
Ma'am?
Jelisa Richardson.
Okay. She lives on Charmwood Drive, City of Bogalusa. She lives on Charmwood Drive, City of Bogaloo. Yes, know anybody else? I will make a motion on it. Oh, say yes.
Okay, wait, um, I'm sorry, um, President, I know that choice, I'm sorry, but I'm just trying to get some clarification.
Trying to buy.
Yeah, we're getting a certain number of people because some persons are moving, they're going off the board. They got other things going on, so we're just getting new persons that willing to help, eager to help and going on.
Yes, ma'am. If we, if we don't have a certain number of people, then we can't conduct official business legally either. So without these people, we can't do anything, we're at a standstill until these people are approved.
Okay.
How many people are y'all wanting under the commission, so a set number? You said you needed a certain number, so what's that number?
I, I believe the ordinance says 15. We would not be opposed to considering lowering that number.
Or does it say it's 50 or 70?
I believe it says 15. I'm not positive, but I believe that's what it says.
I've always said this, these labels up in order of meat, that, that they happened several times under all administrations, current and past, where these forms are just, this was when the city would have 25,000 people just when something's been written. So they do need to be dropped, you know, so, so you can meet forms or stay off of it. So, yeah, but anyway.
Did I clear your ear, Miss Smith?
Yeah, it definitely does, my voice is coming, I'm sorry, but it definitely does.
Do we have a motion to do it, Ms. Richardson? I have a question about Red Tull Blue. Got a motion for the second. Roadblock, y'all.
President Kelly?
Aye.
Question, uh?
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith? Right here.
Uh, Councilwoman Kate? Aye. Councilwoman Lorie? Councilwoman Temple?
Next what we have up would be, uh, Vicky Monje. Monje? Monje, okay, Vicky Monje. She's a woman who lives on, uh, 13, 14 Patterson Drive, City of Bogaloo. We have a motion on, uh, Ms. Monje, Monje. Motion?
I don't, I'm with Vicky, but I stick it.
Yeah, second, roadblock, please, uh, roadblock, uh.
President Kelly?
Aye.
Vice President Irvin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kate? Councilwoman Lorie? Councilwoman Temple?
Next we have this, we'll meet Watkins?
Yes, sir.
And we have Watson, Watkins, uh, female, 707 Mississippi Avenue.
I'll make a motion.
We have a motion?
Is she here? Second.
We have the second, roadblock, please, I don't know who it is.
President Kelly?
Aye.
Vice President Irvin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kate? Ma'am? Councilwoman Lorie? Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
Next we have Marion Barnes?
I'll make a motion.
Where, under Main Street?
Second.
We have a motion, the second of this Barnes. Roadblock, please.
President Kelly?
Aye.
Vice President Irvin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
She's not here, but I wish she was because she's a phenomenal woman, very active, very involved, very dedicated, very sincere, goes above and beyond, and she would definitely be a go here on your board. There in the eye.
We were very careful when we moved that.
There in the eye for her, she is a go get here.
Councilwoman Kate?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lorie? Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
Next we have the first woman, Alden?
Make a motion.
She's on Highway 60, the fourth point of order, for say, a question on this. Uh, Ms. Crystal Alden, I take it does live in the fourth ward, is it the Highway 60 part that is in the fourth?
I am not familiar to that extent of the area, so I cannot answer that. Um, I can tell you she is the owner of the Call Me Time, right on the corner.
Okay, okay, I know, okay, now I'll check your house, that is, okay.
Motion, the second?
Second.
I'll make a motion, it's being second.
Roadblock, please.
President Kelly?
Aye.
Vice President Irvin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye, and thank you, Ms. Crystal, um, as well for wanting to approach the board.
Councilwoman Kate?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lorie?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
Next we have Jennifer Carlson McCreary.
McCreary.
Ma'am?
McCreary.
McCreary, okay, Jennifer McCreary, 713 Virginia Avenue. We have a motion.
Second.
Second. We have a motion, roadblock, please.
President Kelly?
Aye.
Vice President Irvin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kate?
I'm sure you still be going on.
Councilwoman Lorie?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
Christmas in the park.
What's that?
Christmas in the park is on.
We had one, there should be one for Sheena Walker?
Who?
Sheena Walker?
Tell us about it, please.
Uh, she's a, she's a local business owner, I've done work with her in the past. Um, she always shows up and does an amazing job, she's very professional, very active in the community. I actually met her through Ms. Mignon of Teen Capables. Um, and I just feel like she would be a really good asset because of her character and her hard work ethic.
Where she live?
She's the owner of Eat Spicy.
Where?
Eat Spicy is the name of her business, it's a catering company.
Where she live at?
I don't know, I'm not sure.
I would recommend until we get occupation wise. You have enough to do a full time, y'all can do this. So you know where she first lived, ma'am? Favorite, what, how's your place, what's your first name? Well, your first name would be, what do you?
Sheena Walker, Sheena.
Thank you.
What's the last name, Walker?
So Councilwoman Smith, you're saying that she does live inside of the fourth ward?
Yeah.
Okay.
She lives in Councilor District D, yeah, actually, okay.
President Kelly?
Aye.
Vice President Irvin?
Aye.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Aye.
Councilwoman Smith?
Aye.
Councilwoman Kate?
Aye.
Councilwoman Lorie?
Aye.
Councilwoman Temple?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We can bring the rodeo commission up and next week, thank you. Finishing up my remarks, um, July 4th, the American Legion Parade will roll as usual. Uh, later that night in the park, from 5:00 to 9:00 PM, we'll be hosting, um, a 4th of July Gathering, featuring a hot dog eating contest, a watermelon eating contest, carnival games, karaoke, and a fireworks show later that night. So, the reason why, just for public transparency, the reason why we didn't partner with the American Legion this year on the fireworks show at the mill is because we've gotten dinged by the Legislative Auditorium's office for donation of public funds. Uh, last year, we, once we found out that she couldn't donate public funds, we approached the American Legion to try to get invoices and other documents for the half that the city always pays. Uh, we have been unsuccessful up until this point, so we decided that to stay in compliance with state law and to not take the fireworks show from the citizens, we, the city would host it on its own. On July 20th, uh, we'll be hosting the Second Annual Back to School Bash. We're looking for community organizations, businesses, and churches to help set up, uh, booths to give out school supplies to the students. Last year, we had over, uh, 350 students show up and it was storming. Everybody went to their cars and waited it out and the park was packed back out. Everybody went home with enough school supplies to last them, so I hope that we can all come together again this year. This Saturday, we'll be hosting a kids' market, we have over 50 kids signed up. Uh, it'll be in front of the Daily News. This Saturday, from 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM, we're asking that you please come out and support the youth of our community. Last, lastly regarding the chief of police search, uh, the civil service board, they had a mix-up with the scores. Uh, the state examiner's office sent them out, but they were sent to like the wrong P.O. box or something of that nature. So we are now in the receipt of the, the scores, they have called a meeting for tomorrow night, at 5:30 PM, I believe, to open and approve the scores. I would like to thank the, the DA's office for giving their experience and I will take that into account when making my selection. I will announce the nominee the middle of next week and place this individual on the next council agenda for the 18th. I have already interviewed all candidates for the job. Uh, there was a, a mix-up in terms of, I appointed a selection committee. Uh, I was informed by the city attorney that I was within my right to do so, but it required council confirmation. But to keep from drawing this process out, because we've been without a chief for going on two years now, uh, we decided to go ahead and let the citizens just, I invited them to observe, they didn't ask any questions. Uh, I asked all of the questions and, yeah, just for a complete transparency, because I know that'll come up later. Other than that, I'm asking that you all please help each other, stay cool, it's really hot outside. Um, if, if you know anybody that needs to cool off, our lot is always open during, during working hours. I understand that our community is too small for cooling centers. Uh, we don't have the capacity to conduct that type of thing right now, but we do welcome you all to City Hall whenever we're open. Thank you.
Thank you. I'd like to remind everybody, one Thursday is a important day of our parade in the American Legion and the city. I'd like to ask everyone to participate, if you feel like it's gonna be a hot day, if you have children, it's gonna be hot. And elderly people, it's gonna be hot, make sure you bring the premium deck out. Be safe, be courageous tomorrow, and, uh, next up, we have Vice President Irvin.
I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight and I want to just, uh, say and, uh, one other thing, that don't forget to wear your hats when you're out and about, it is extremely hot out there. And, uh, make sure you carry your plenty of liquids and happy 4th of July. And I want to say one thing to come into defense with Councilwoman Smith and Councilwoman Kate's, that the person that is referenced in Mr. Merrill's speech logo was in a different city altogether. That, and his doors were locked. There were multiple witnesses, thank you, have a good night.
Thank you, here's Councilwoman Douglas.
I'd like to say good evening, thank you everyone for coming out. This is her campaign season, so I'm asking everyone to, to start preparing, because right now, uh, the world is strong and he is true. So, um, they say it might go this way, they say it might go that way, but we still need to be prepared. They said the trend was going the other way, which way did the trend go? It ain't right here, so, so I'm asking everyone to, um, be prepared and also, um, I'll excuse myself. My family's had a bunch and I need to be there, thank you.
Thank you, President, and then it was Councilwoman Smith.
Thank you everybody for coming out, please bear with me, I have a cold, my dress is going in and out. And certain things I just feel I don't have to address, but I'm gonna, um, address Mr. Keith Merrill. Um, and he got up and he getting to say the two ladies' names. If I get attended a meeting, it was a very productive meeting, I'm gonna try to get all this said within my limits of time. However, anyone knows me, I, I have been blessed with more than one vehicle. So you're willing to follow any vehicle that I drive around town. If you need a ride anywhere and I have the time, I'm willing to take you. But if you know me, and you know me well, I do work on Columbus Street, I have a job there. I am the social worker, social service director, so Mr. Keith, whoever you had to drive, you to follow me, let's be honest and let's tell the truth, something you don't know how to do. Um, I, I went to work, I don't have to go back and report anything to anybody, I'm not a kid. I don't play games, but however, I think I do pay part of your housing, since you're in public housing. Okay, I don't have time to play with you. I, I have, you're right, you're right, I'm not gonna argue back and forth, but I do know that Mr. Michelle Warrior is in the ordinance and she does know that you play games and you call, you rehearse things to come up and say, that's very childish of you. I'm not gonna go there with you, but if you're gonna give up and say something, please make sure you're telling the facts and stating the fact, I don't have to report anything to anybody because I pay my own. I don't have to report anything to anybody because I pay my own bills, okay? Well, I tell you what, you asking God to kill you, Lord answered his prayer. Thank you everybody for coming out. And once again, my number is nine eight five, five seven zero seven one four five. I thank everybody that got up tonight and spoke. Thank you to our local police department and fire department for June T. For helping to go make the food and for everybody that came out, it was a nice event. Continue to keep myself in prayer, the council, our mayor and his family. And let's lift each other up in prayer daily. And I'm sorry if some of y'all feel that I got out of character, but I hate to be late.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Councilwoman Tate?
I thank everyone for coming out tonight. Continue prayers to our citizens. Prayers to our mayor, our administration. I just want to, uh... Thank everyone for, we did have a good meeting, a strategic planning meeting, a week before last. And I just want to, uh... Thank everyone for our meeting on yesterday, for our COVID, uh... Not COVID, COVID, our meeting on yesterday for, for that, um... I just want to thank everyone for coming out.
Councilwoman Lowry?
Uh, I'm just one thing, one or two things to say to our charge, trouble. Been having chief for a while and I just want to personally tell people that you have done an amazing job. Our clients, step aside, a lot of race has been made. Visibility to the police is, I don't like anything that I've seen since I've been in Bogalooza. So I'm just a great, great work you've done, the rest of the public, I think, who's been, great thing for us.
Thank you, Councilwoman Lowry. Uh, Councilwoman Temple?
I'd like to say congratulations to Ms. Liza Pittman on her new position. I worked with her many years ago and, uh... I worked with Ms. Pittman many years ago in the city school, so I know that she did a fabulous job. As always, many thanks to the fire and police and Public Works Department for all your hard work. I want to wish everyone a happy Fourth and I hope you have a wonderful day and stay safe. And I thank you all for coming, good night.
Thank you. Our next meeting will be July the sixteenth, this meeting is now adjourned.